Hello, I'm Tom Owens. I am the Matoka District Planning Commissioner and also the Chair of the Chesterfield Planning Commission, enjoying my second term as Chair. I'm here today to present to you the 2022 Chesterfield Planning Commission Annual Report. This report outlines the actions that have been taken by the Commission itself, having to do with zoning petitions, site development plans, zoning ordinance amendments, and land initiatives. It's an opportunity to kind of highlight what the Planning Commission does, what the staff does, what the Commissioners do, break down our things that we've done over the past year. Our primary role is to advise you all on what to do with zoning cases. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, but we're there to do the homework for you all and present this to you. The staff continues to vet cases for us on a regular basis and give us information. They do a lot of the really deep research on what's involved in some of these cases. They also give feedback to a lot of the applicants, and it helps keep us as independent as we can be, so we get these decisions independent without influence of the applicant having, you know, a lot of direct contact with us. I'd like to commend first everyone on the Planning Department for their work that they do, and also the Commissioners themselves. I'd like to highlight, this is, I think, the first time this Commission here where all five Planning Commissioners have been certified Planning Commissioners, so I'd like to continue to highlight that. That's a lot of effort for the Commissioners to put in. And also want to, you know, again, the professional planners, I had an opportunity to attend the National Planning Conference in Philadelphia and get a taste of the inside of the planning aspect of this, and there is a lot of unspoken work that people don't know happens in the planning world. So I hope this report is useful for you all, and, you know, I look forward to some good questions from you. So, let's see. So what have we done this past year? So we've made recommendations for several things. Some zoning ordinance amendments that we develop, we go through. Some of these are pretty easy and cut and dry. Some of them take months for us to develop to get a working copy to you all to look at as they come through the Commission. We've had three comprehensive plan amendments where we develop an overlay or something of that nature. I believe, for example, Roseland, which I'll be mentioning to you later in this, was a good two or three years. It was one of the first things I saw when I came on the Commission. That took a while to get to. Of course, with the pandemic happening, that kind of elongated things as well. And then we also sent 114 zoning cases to you all that were subsequently approved action-wise, but there's also some other numbers behind that 114. You know, there's this aura out there that people think we approve everything that's put in front of us, but if you look at the numbers that support it, it's not even like that at all. So let's start off with a little bit about the comprehensive plan amendments and the modernization. You know, this looks at specific area plans, and they remain in effect where they may be amended by the Board of Supervisors. In April of 2022, we replaced the current Jank Road-Chippingham Development Area, the Route 360 Corridor, Eastern Midlothian and Northern Courthouse Road community plans. Those were adopted in 1983, 1995, 1998, and 2008 respectively. So this had a lot of time before they were updated. This plan amendment was a technical cleanup of the comprehensive plan, replacing four older plans with the land designations found in the county's countywide comprehensive plan. That's a plan, for those who don't know what the comprehensive plan is, by state law, it has to be updated every five years. So when we make these comprehensive plan updates, it kind of resets that clock because we've made updates to it. And it's there to provide land guidance, to make it easier for citizens and, you know, the community as a whole to look over this. So let's start looking at some of these plans that we did. The first one is the Genito 288 Special Focus Area Plan. This was the development of what, you know, South Side Speedway area, that area there that's also adjacent to River City Sportsplex. This was one that came through that I was actually kind of excited about. You know, I'm a sports official outside of what I do on the Planning Commission, so I really like sports, predominantly youth sports, because, you know, youth who participate in sports become better citizens because they've had a chance to engage in competition and know what it's like to strive for excellence. And I think highlighting sports and creating a place for that to happen is really good for youth development in our area. So as part of this plan, you know, we reflect the community's needs. The plan includes, you know, land uses around the Sportsplex, bike and pedestrian connectivity, quite a bit of green space, some streetscaping, some design guidelines that'll be for different area groups that come in there, and a transportation infrastructure. And I think there's also some space on here for, I think, a hotel possibly. If you've ever seen some of the large tournaments that come into River City Sportsplex, all of our hotels that are in that general area there are packed. If you go to Panera Bread on a Saturday morning, you are lucky to get in there if you don't get in there at a specific time. So our sports tourism, when it comes to this River City Sportsplex, is a really nice thing and a nice addition. The next one we updated was the Community Facilities Plan update. You know, it's also known as the Public Facilities Plan. It's a Chapter 15 of the comprehensive plan, for those of you following along with your copy at home. The primary purpose of this is to guide new facility locations throughout the county, you know, find the next Bill's Barbecue for a police station, that kind of thing. That's really what it guides. It also more closely aligns with the, you know, the county's adopted capital improvement program. It shortens facility planning to the five-year outlook, so we can focus on, you know, the most implementable projects that we have out there. You know, it's nice to dream, but we also have to dream in reality, so this helps us keep that focus. The next one's the Rockville Special Focus Area. So what's interesting about this is the National Planning Association Convention I went to, there's also a Virginia chapter of this. This specific Rockwood Special Focus Area Plan actually won an award at the Virginia State version of that kind of conference. It has a whole lot of things in it that are really nice. Land uses, it's not, you know, confined to just one type of land use, provides different housing choices, interconnected grid system of streets, bikeways, trailways, pedestrian corridors, greenways, realistically phased development that's going to happen, so it's not a Big Bang kind of thing. It's phased in over time. They recognize the implementation already begun at one of the key sites within the plan's area, which is the redevelopment of the Rockwood Square Shopping Center and Rockwood Golf Park. And they allotted Chesterfield County for producing and adopting the plan and expired a timeframe of 13 months. So this was one of the faster adoptions that we had. Another zoning ordinance amendment, we did these five amendments here, one having to do with common area. And the common area one was one where we defined how much common area needed to be done when someone was planning to do a development. So, for example, a certain percentage has to be set aside based on the capacity that a developer is presenting or someone is presenting. In the past, that was kind of a floating number, and this kind of helped outline that to, I want to say, make it easier for people to understand what they need to do, as opposed to getting an arbitrary number or something. Solar facilities, we talked a little bit about solar facilities. There were a lot of work sessions we went through with this, with presentations from Dominion Virginia Power, where we learned a lot about solar, more than I thought I would ever know, and found out, you know, how they can't, we made guidelines saying you can't really alter the landscape it goes on if the steep is more than 20%, things of that nature. One of the things that happened in a neighboring community is a solar farm came in and they leveled the entire area and made it level, and it started producing runoff that was very detrimental to the areas around it. So we saw that and took it head-on and said, "We can't let that happen here. We got to make sure the landscape stays similar to what it is." The next one is the limited duration signs. You know, that was more of a cleanup of that issue. It modernized it to where, you know, we had certain signs that were out of date. For example, we would allow four signs to be on a site that were 30, was it 32 square feet? But if you wanted to put a single sign up, it was less than the 32 square feet. So we just kind of cleaned up some of that language. There were signs you had to make applications for that didn't make sense and others that you didn't, so we tried again to make it consistent. Outdoor advertising signs. We extended the termination date for the replacement of some of these outdoor signs, more known as billboards that you see on the side of the highway. A lot of those were getting old and dilapidated. When the pandemic came around, it kind of elongated that because, you know, labor was hard to get and get people out to work, so we extended that for a short period from 2024, which was the sunset for that, to 2028. And then the Roseland Overlay District, this is a plan to reorganize the Roseland Project. It was a large-scale master plan community of about 1,400 acres of land. It's in the northwest portion of Chesterfield County. The Planning Department worked with a lot of the property owners and created this zoning overlay district that was from the original 2008 plan and updated, modernized it, reworked it a little bit to meet the current needs and the future needs. Some of the aspects of that were out of date due to, you know, changes in technology, changes in needs. So it was reviewed during the rezoning process. We recommended the approval of it in November 2022, and you all approved that in January of 2023. All right. Now let's talk about numbers. So these numbers here are the official numbers, and I say that with a grain of salt, because people will say, "341," and you approved 114, that doesn't tell us that you're actually looking at these. Well, that 341 zoning opinions is the official number. That doesn't include the conversations people call into the call center and talk to someone and say, "This is why I have a plan to do this," and they decide it's not a good idea. You have someone reach out to one of you all and talk to you, and they decide not to go forward. Somebody starts the application process, and planning talks to them, and they decide to pull that case. That real number is probably closer four to 500, maybe even 550 of cases that come in. So these 341 are the ones that are actually, they put pen on paper, or should I say, they put letters in the boxes on the screen and click submit. Then they have pre-application meetings, which are the meetings that these applicants go through where they meet with different county departments. They get to hear the interaction. Those county departments weigh in on what their expectations are. People like environmental engineering, transportation. They set those standards of what needs to happen in the project. Utilities gets to say so. And then that could be anywhere from a couple of months to eight to 10 months before that case actually moves anywhere because of what has to happen in that case. And then we get to the Planning Commission Actions on Zoning Cases, which we had 132 cases this year. So out of those official 341 cases, only 38% of them actually made it to the Commission. And that's thinking of almost 200 of those cases started out and decided to go another way, withdrawal, or they are just sitting there stale. So from the Commission, we send that to the Board of Supervisors, and when it gets to you all, we action to approve 114 of those cases. So that means 18 of those cases actually either stopped with us, got withdrawn, or they deferred, but you all approved 114. So that was 33% of the cases. If we compare that to the previous year, the previous year we had 384 cases and we approved 94, and that was 21%. So that number may seem like it jumped significantly, but as we drill into the numbers, you'll see the type of case has a lot to do with the numbers underlying here. So let's talk about the types of zoning cases. Out of those 114, if we break them down, we had 29 cases that were new residential cases. We had 59 that were non-residential cases, 19 having to do with second or two-family dwellings, and seven amendments to previous cases. All right? If we look at just the 29 residential cases, there were 6,700 new units that were permitted. Andy, I need to put you on the spot here. That 6,700, is that net new, or is that the number that were in the cases? That was just the number that was in the cases, correct?
That's the numbers that were in those cases.
So one of the numbers I think that we also need to track here is if a case had 300 units in it, and it came back through for a change in the case, and that case still had 300 units, that would actually not be new units. There were units that were already there. So that's a number that we don't really publicly track, but if we were to take that and apply that here, that number of units could be significantly decreased in there. Mr. Carroll?
Is it also true that there are some of those cases that there are actually reduction in the amount of units that were previously approved when the cases came back through?
That is correct. And there's also some of these where the types of units changed. For example, where there was a case that came through this past year where the units went from multifamily to a mix of single-family townhome and multifamily all in the same case. And the number of units they were getting approved for stayed the same, but the actual number of units they were planning on building was reduced significantly. And due to an arrangement with the purchaser that they were purchasing it from, they would not allow them to reduce the units should the sale not go through because the person who currently owned the property didn't want to lose the capability of those units in order to attract another buyer. So there's reasons why some people don't change the density on a project that's already existing. All right. So let's drill down to this a little bit more, because I know you all like data as much as I do. So in the 59 non-residential cases, those were a mix of family daycares, signs that needed approved, farm use issues, solar issues, some that are under other which are downzonings. We had, you know, we had a case that went from an R12 to agriculture. Recreational vehicles that needed to be parked in people's homes, a special events business. We had a water tank for the county that needed to be approved. We had to modify some developments. We had some commercial uses. We had some businesses from the home. So there's a lot of mix. So that's 59. That's, you know, half of what actually went through case-wise were these non-residential cases. If I were to map those by district, you can see there's quite a bit of purple up here, but if we break this map down, starting with the Matoka District, we had 40 cases. The Bermuda District had 25, Midlothian had 21, Cloverhill and Dale both came in 14 cases each. So, you know, Matoka has the largest amount of land in the county, and the whole street corridor is still a popular place for people to want to put things. And again, some of the cases that were out in, at least in the Matoka District, which I can speak to, were cases that already had existing units and had modifications to them. So a lot of this also comes with community engagement. I know when you all got elected, you all knew this was something you all had to do one time a month for a meeting, and you were done with it, correct? Yeah, exactly. So from the Planning Commission standpoint, not only the planners have meetings, but we also engage with the public. So we have our 12 public hearings with our work sessions that we have every year, but there's also these community meetings that we attend. And those communication, those community meetings are vitally important to these cases because it lets the citizens really know what's going on. We advertise these as well as we can. We use social media. We use our Behind the Mic program. We use all of our different ways of communication to try to get this information out to the public, because they ask for the communication, so we're doing our best to make sure they get that information. When we have comprehensive plans and ordinance amendments, those are a little bit more wide-scale, so we had 10 of those. And we try our best to engage the community as much as we can. So what's in the future? So we have our zoning modernization program, which we've called ZOMOD. One of our planners actually named that. It's in progress right now. We have a long way to go on that. We're just in the beginning stages. Our past two work sessions have covered the residential uses proposed, as well as the non-residential/commercial uses and offices and whatnot. So we're progressing through some work sessions on these to get information as it comes along. We have the Ridgedale Special Area Focus Plan, which is currently in progress, and that is going to be in the Dale District. That's going to be reviewed. It's going to be looked at for future growth and development, and this should be in front of the Planning Commission in the next couple of months for hearing. The Eastern Midlothian Corridor Plan, it, you know, could serve as a model for other plans in the area. That's going to be kicking off here a little bit later in 2023. Have we kicked that one off yet?
We've had some interdepartment meetings. We've had some interdepartment meetings, but we have not had any public engagement meetings yet.
All right. And then we have a code amendment that is starting to gain a little bit of momentum and feedback from the community, having to do with additional dwelling units. That's one of the code amendments we have in front of us now, and how people are going to have additional dwelling units as part of their property if they choose to try to do that. So that's the information I have to present to you today. I'm opening up for dialogue and to any questions. I have staff here to help. I have the Planning Director as well.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate your being here. Thank you very much. What would you say is the distance that you communicate when you have a zoning amendment that's coming forth? What's the distance of communications that you strive for to ensure that the appropriate number of citizens are communicated with? Because that's so important before a case gets to us, that everyone in that area is aware of the case and the impact of the case.
I'll go ahead and try to answer that.
And I'll add a part two in.
Okay. Basically, for an actual, say, a code amendment where we're taking care of a particular change to the overall zoning ordinance, we try to do the entire county, not notices to every, you know, postcards to everybody, but we do on social media. We have on our webpage, we use our portal. We try to use all the social media opportunities that we know about, and communications has been super helpful with us to make sure we try to get as many people as we can. We have kind of a working list of concerned or interested citizens that want to know what's going on with the Planning Department and these types of changes, and we usually do a social media blast out to all of those for sure, to make sure they know what's going on. As for a particular zoning case, for like an individual geographic piece of land, we're notifying everybody within that particular area and anybody that's attached to or adjacent to that particular piece of property, and we look at that with the roadway. So we give a pretty good swath of land all the way around the property to let them know. In addition to that, we put the signs out on all the major streets that that property has any kind of exposure or visibility to, and then we also with social media try to get all that information out. And I think, you know, if you've looked at our webpage recently, you know, we've got a lot of information. If someone drives by and sees a sign, they can go to our webpage and find pretty quickly what that case is, and then on the, and read what the basic request is and where they, where that particular project is in relations to a community meeting or a public hearing or what have you.
So I add my part two in there. Part of the notification process is we do all this, and you'll still hear people say, "Why didn't somebody say something about it?" And I think a lot of that is, can be an attestation to tunnel vision people have. People pay attention to what they want to pay attention to. And so we have issues with getting some people to these meetings, and we get people who show up mad, and we've had three meetings on this one project to iron things out. So there is two parts to this. There's the part that we provide, but there's also the public participation of people needing to participate and be able to see and pay attention to that postcard that comes in the nearby box, pays attention to that, that social media. And sometimes people don't pay attention to that stuff, or they cross over because it's, oh, it's just something from the county. So we do our best to communicate as much as possible.
Mr. Chairman? Couple things. I think you all do a great job communicating with citizens. People don't realize this, but community meetings aren't required by state code. And so we really do go, try to go out of our way to mitigate concerns raised by citizens when we hear them. And I think that a lot of times the efforts, even the efforts that are taken, may not be seen all the time, but I know that they're taking place, and I'm proud of them. I do want to highlight the Rockwood Special Focus Area Plan in here and just say thank you, because this plan and the 288 Genito Plan is indicative of some of the great planning going on in this department. And I couldn't be more pleased with the work, and as you take a look at the variety of not only land uses, but housing choices, the mixed uses, the bikeways and trails and pedestrian facilities going, there's a lot of thought being put in to the planning process. And I just want to say thank you, because I know you do a lot of work, and I know that it sometimes gets, you know, gets maybe misconstrued sometimes, but I think you do a lot of good work, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Engel? Mr. Chair. To Mr. Holland's point, I do think that we have followed all the rules that are in place. We've done a good job of putting out signs. But to your point, Mr. Owens, we do get people that find out about a case, unfortunately, late. And the day before there's a vote at the Planning Commission or the day before there's a vote at the Board of Supervisors is not really a good time for somebody to decide to get involved. We need to get people involved sooner. So a couple of things that citizens can do is sign up for Chesterfield Connects and get the Planning Commission agendas that are coming out and the Board of Supervisors agendas that are coming out. You can see what's going to come to the Board of Supervisors if you're watching the Planning Commission agenda. So that one may be as important or more important because it gets you in a lot earlier in the process. But sign up for those two connections. That way you can get the information that you're looking for, because that will come to you, and that's something, you can, there's so many things in the county you can sign up for. You get so much, you would be in overload. But you can pick, if you're really interested in parks and recs, you can pick that. But I suggest that all the citizens that do have concerns about what is going to come forward in the county, sign up for that, especially for the Planning Commission for Chesterfield Connects. That being said, I do think that we could do a little bit more on notifications. I think if there's an HOA that is relatively adjacent to the property, we could notify the HOA and possibly expand a little bit beyond the adjacent homeowners, a little bit farther reach. I know that in some areas, a smaller reach might be 10 homes, and in another area, that might be a couple thousand homes. And we do, the county makes all of those connections by mail to those citizens, and it is, it would be overburdening on staff to have to reach out to 3,000 citizens versus 10, but we do need to expand it, come up with a parameter that works, that doesn't overload our staff, but does get that word out earlier so that we do get people involved in the process. Because the best process is one where the applicant and the citizens work together early on, because there's many times the citizens, instead of just saying, "Oh, I don't want that," they should say, "Hey, we have a drainage issue, or we have this traffic issue that if that was solved, it would make it a whole lot easier for us to see this case come in." And if we can get that communication going much earlier in the process, I think that you'll see good cases where we've had citizens that say, "Oh, I don't want that," and then they found out, "Oh, my gosh, that drainage issue we've had forever? We can get that fixed with this case." And they come back and they end up supporting the case because they find out that the applicant's not there to make it worse for them, but to coexist to make it better. And I just think we need to work together, and the citizens need to be included in being together, to get involved earlier in the process and to come with not no, but how can we make this better, or how can we work together to get a better outcome? And I think we will see happier citizens, and quite frankly, happier applicants too, because anything that happens late in the process is just not good. So thank you for all of your efforts and hope that we can work together to do a little bit more expansion on the communication. Thank you.
So, Mr. Engel, I do want to comment on something you said there. One of the things I think citizens also need to understand is we're here for them to engage with, and I think sometimes citizens forget that we will talk to them, we will listen to them. If they contact us, we will respond to them. I think sometimes they feel like they're, you know, if they try to contact, and I'm not going to call anybody out, if they try to contact levels above us that are like at the state level or whatnot, there's such a road to get through to get to speak with someone. We don't have those types of things here. If they reach out and call Mr. Carroll or call Mr. Engel, call Mr. Winslow, you're going to get a human to call you back, and it's probably going to be the person you're trying to get in touch with. It won't be a staffer usually. So I think citizens need to understand that, that we're not trying to hide from them. Matter of fact, we want to hear from them.
The only thing I would add is, in reference to your idea of trying to involve the adjacent HOAs, we've tried to do a better job this year of trying to reach out to some of those in coordination with community enhancement. We've kind of developed a much more accurate list of membership of the HOAs, at least of their officials or officers. And so contacting some of those on a case is a much more efficient way of us to get the word out than sending, like you said, 1,000 additional notices out. I don't think that's a possibility, but maybe telling the HOA that's next door that includes 1,000 houses, they can at least pass on that information if they see. includes 1,000 houses, they can at least pass on that information if they see, think it's necessary. We've tried to do a better job on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Owens, both of you, Mr. Gilley, it's a great job that you both do. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know, which means that an idea comes up and we start thinking about, okay, you know, a developer comes to us and says, "Hey, we're going to do this kind of work," and we go down that road. And one of the things that I've been wrestling with is what is a clean, clear way to get in touch with my constituents so that they know at the beginning of the process as opposed to when we're way much further down the road? And I'd be openness in any suggestions that you both may have, in that, I mean, community connections, great idea, and that is certainly a way of opening that up. But I remember having a conversation earlier this week about community connections, and I asked the question, "Well, how many people in my district are signed up in community connections?" And out of 45,000, it was about 2,000. So it's a very small number. So I think we need to be more creative in the way we're thinking about connecting with them, if it is emails or if it is texts or something like that, that we're able to gather those phone numbers and to say, "Hey, this is something that's just coming or getting going." So I mean, I would love to see and work with you all as to what creative ways we can do that. So when we're talking 2,000, we're only talking a very small percentage of the amount of, and by the time, and I agree with you all in that, when we go with, once it comes to light, then everyone's panicking, and they're afraid for whatever reason, many of them often legitimate. And then, so when they're panicking, all of a sudden, that's where I'm getting the flood of emails, and everyone is kind of off to the races. So we need to work together to figure out, and I'm open to work with you all, to figure out, okay, what is a better, more effective way earlier in the process?
So I think one of the challenges that we're starting to have is if you've listened in the past to like radio or something like that, and I don't want to call any specific brand out, but the Book of Faces used to be the place they would send people to all the time. I've noticed over the past six to 12 months, they don't mention that platform now when they're, "Find us here." That used to be the first platform they mentioned. Now you're hearing three or four other platforms. So I think there's a change happening in the social media world where the platforms are changing to more direct, shorter messages. The consumers are looking for less two- to six-minute advertisements now to 10- to 15-second clips so they can move on to the next piece of information to consume. And I think that's one of the challenges of this, is that people have shorter attention spans, and the avenues have become more diverse to get to people where we had more focused areas 15 years ago, 10 years ago.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation today. Thank you for all you do, especially for me as my planning commissioner, you do an unbelievable job. This is not a shameless plug for the media that's in the room, but they do help us when we send our notices out from our communications media staff. Many times, people tell me, "Hey, I heard about the meeting you're having tonight, this morning, on the news." And so there are people who still watch the news, and so what you guys do for us is important. And again, we can always be more creative in the ways that we get the information out. And as we move forward, there are other opportunities that we can do that. That's why we've expanded our communication and media to actually have a bigger outreach through, you know, social platforms like Nextdoor to get out in the community and let people know what's going on. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.